Good evening, everyone. I will call this meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for November 21st, 2023. And Misty, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quinell?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise and they supply again, reset with me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. Item four on our agenda is Councilmember Board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes from the City Council of November 7th, 2023, and the Public Works Board from October 10th of 2023. Are there any comments or corrections on either of these minutes? Okay, councilmembers, since I'm running this meeting remotely, please speak up or raise your hand if you want to be recognized. I'll try to catch you on the video. Seeing no comments or questions, we'll accept both of these meeting minutes into the record. Our next agenda item, number five, is the Joint Rock Lake Committee Monthly Report. And I just want to introduce this item. Because the Joint Rock Lake Committee records are managed by the town, these minutes don't come to us for approval or acceptance into our records. And I spoke to the current Chair of the Committee, Wendy Catalani-Davies, in the last couple of weeks, and we'd like to try out having them have a standing agenda item for the second meeting of every month so that they can report out. And Wendy will also be sharing the minutes once they're officially approved. She'll be sharing them with the clerk who can distribute them to the council. So we'll give this a try and try to make sure we're having good communication with the Joint Rock Lake Committee. So is Wendy there tonight?
I'm here.
Fantastic. Please, go ahead.
Yes, we're going to be, and thank you for putting us on the agenda once a month. I think we need better communication with this, I don't know if it's better, but we need more communication with the city as we'd have with the town. And we welcome, we welcome the opportunity to assist the city and the town with any research projects regarding the lake, as you had us do with the water levels. That was, what was great. We're trying to attend other committee meetings, both town and city, where agendas are going to cover lake issues, like the parks committees and the planning committees. If there's an agenda item that looks like it is regarding the lake, we're going to try and be at those meetings. The County Land and Water Conservation Department has hired a new water management specialist, Colton Hutchinson. He will be attending our meetings on a regular basis to provide Jefferson County news to us. And this information will be in our minutes if, when you get them. If he gives a report, we try to summarize it. Also, the RLIA, the Rock Lake Improvement Association, attends our meeting on a regular basis also to provide us with updates on what they're working on, which is good because we complement each other and sometimes overlap each other. So that's good. We have had discussions regarding articles to provide to the Lake Mills Leader for publication in the Leader and social media sites. Currently, we have two that are in our queue, one on the impact of ash on water quality and article regarding pets, keeping them on leashes and cleaning up after them. Those will be discussed at our next meeting, and then we'll have them published with the Leader. And Pat Stevens and Kevin Lerner are both working on articles, one on ice safety, excuse me, and the other one on kayaking safety tips. We're going to try and submit one every other month. We were a little ambitious, thinking we'd do like two a month. So we've decided every other month, for sure, we would try and get one in. We are keeping up to date with regard to the possible development of a lake district for Rock Lake. The exploratory team is meeting regularly. They have small forums, they've had, they're having small forums to provide information to people and to get information from people on how they feel about it. So I try to attend their meetings also, so we keep up on that. We would welcome any opportunity to, to do any additional, if you have any additional service to the city as well as the town. There are several other matters pending that potentially impact Rock Lake and are of interest to us. We would be happy to assist with any of those matters. And I have a list, and you'll probably get a list in a letter I sent you, but dam management policy, development of, at Sandy Beach, dredging of the mill pond, supporting aquatic water patrol on Rock Lake, supporting education of the public regarding Rock Lake issues such as beach advisories, boat launches, and invasive species. So if any of those come across as something you'd like us to do more research on, we'd be happy to do that. And we understand that you have other committees working on these projects also, but if we can be of any assistance, we certainly would love to be. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, Wendy? At the beginning, before you, you started talking, it was outlined that, that there's some type of problem getting minutes to us. We've, we've had that in the past. What do you see is the problem now on getting minutes to City Council?
I think it's, I think it's fixed. We've decided to make sure that they're approved minutes, and then I'll send them to Robin, to the town, and then I'll send you a link to those minutes every month. You'll always be one minute, one month behind because we approve, until they're approved, we can't publish them. So I think, I don't know what the problem was in the past. There had been, over the history, this, this group that we send them to, and then the next time, there's this group. And I was a new chairperson, and I didn't develop that group, so people were not getting minutes that we're used to getting them. So now we've decided one place, one set of minutes, no mistakes on you getting it one and you getting a different one. So I think we fixed that.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you.
Sure. Anything else?
Any other questions for Wendy? Wendy, I have a question slash comment I have also heard about, that there's a group that's kind of starting to meet and talk about the idea of forming a lake management district. And I'm only vaguely familiar with what that process is, but I think it would involve some action by the city and/or town. Is your committee kind of tracking that? Or would that be something that you might be willing to work on in terms of just getting an understanding of what process would be followed if voters wanted to form a lake management district?
Right. There's a state statute, I think it's 33, that outlines all of that. And I don't have it all memorized, but the, they have put a, the group has put a PowerPoint together about that. And I believe you have, we have to be, and they have to be involved with the city to have some sort of agreement on, I don't know, publishing, maybe a petition, distributing a petition or different things like that. I don't know exactly, but I'd be happy to get that lined up and bring it to the next meeting if you'd like.
Thanks. That would be great, not, not thinking a formal assignment, but I think just for, for people's education to know what that process might look like.
Right. And we talk about it at our meeting, so it, it'll be, could be part of our report without any problem at all.
Thank you. Any other questions for Wendy? Okay. Thanks for attending tonight, and we'll look forward to having a monthly report from Joint Rock Lake Committee at the second meeting of every council month.
Thank you.
Okay. On to item number six, which is correspondence. Ms. Quinell, I'll start with you.
All righty. I had emails regarding the Humane Society information that was requested the last time and the reason we tabled that resolution. The Rock Lake Improvement Association was another email. The Rock Lake Levels was a concern from a constituent as well as the passing of former councilmember Doug Fritsch. I did have a phone call regarding the Rock Lake Activity Room in City Hall, and I'm working with city staff to get that rectified. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
I had a note on Trelon concerns on College Street, the, probably the same one that she had mentioned, that Ms. Quinell just mentioned about lake levels and the DNR order. Rock Lake Improvement Association minutes, a note from the Director of the Humane Society, and a note on lighting concerns, which I still need to follow up on. It was a busy weekend, so I haven't had that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I had an email about the city's cybersecurity posture, an email or a few emails from the same constituent regarding the history of the mill pond. I had an email with the Rock Lake Improvement Association minutes, and also an email from the Director of the Humane Society.
Thank you. Mr. Fields?
I had the same emails from the Joint Rock Lake Committee on their minutes. Also received the email from the Humane Society from the Director. And then I also had a couple of emails back and forth with a constituent about the parking by the elementary school, looking for information about how to address that. That's it.
Thank you. And I had much the same. I think a number of those items were sent to all of us. In addition, I had a contact regarding an agenda item on the Police and Fire Commission. I think everything else is a repeat. And Ms. Quinell, I did not hear about Mr. Fritsch passing, so thank you for bringing that to all of our attention and our condolences to the Fritsch family. He stepped down from City Council about three years ago, I guess. Our condolences to his family. Okay, the next item is questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your items, your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages actions by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign and sheet provided. For those attending online, please type your name and address in the chat feature. Who, is there anyone in the room that would like to address the council during public comment this evening?
Nobody's stepping up.
Okay. I don't see anyone online. So that being the case, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to our next agenda item, number eight, which is the City Manager's Report. And we have several documents for our review. Drake, anything you'd like to highlight?
Nothing specific to report this evening. If there's any questions the council has of me, please let me know.
Any questions for Drake? Okay. If not, we will move on to number nine, Council Business. And letter A is a presentation regarding the library building project and fundraising. So I take it we will have Gerard Saylor giving our presentation tonight.
Yes, I'm here. So it's not so much, again, a presentation as an update again. And so that was supposed to be a one-page memo, and yet again, my, my signature went under the second page again. But giving an update from the last time I was here, what we're continuing to work on to work for the expansion, just a reminder, we're about half the size of what we should be for our service area, if we're going to meet any kind of modern standard for the library should be doing. And so we continue to work with FEH to kind of finalize their work, and the bulk of their work is done. And with board materials, we see the conceptual drawings they did, and I brought along the big fancy ones, Lisa, I don't know if you can see this, but, and yours, the rest of the council is so far away, I'm not sure it's worthwhile bringing it. But what FEH did was, just to recap, they went back over some of the work they did in 2019, 2020, and reevaluated everything and came up with another floor plan example of what we could have, and then gave us a cost for it. The cost is 8.9 million. And so I'll invite FEH back to give a presentation directly to the council in January, and they could talk more about that. But the designs that they've developed for us are the public designs that we could show to everybody, and that we could take out and use for fundraising. And now that FEH's work is done and they have those plans developed, Jody Sweeney, the Sweeney Group is doing the fundraising feasibility assessment for us. And so I think it was two or three weeks ago, we met with her, her, myself, and a group of, I think it was seven other people, just to talk fundraising ideas about who in the community we should go and speak to about being on a fundraising committee, or who might be interested in donating, or be sources of other people we can talk to. And so the paperwork, the invites and introductory letters from Jody are getting finalized and will go out, I would think, in about a week. And what Jody does is she goes and talks to as many people as she needs to, to get an idea of how much money, an achievable fundraising goal that she can reach for the community. And when we're going to be talking to people, it's really going to be all in our service area and outside, because she will go and talk to anybody who might be interested in donating to the library. And that could include people who don't actually live in the community, or people don't even use the library. And she will have her final report in January, and that will give a reachable number. And so if the project right now is quoted at 8.9 million, I would think in January and February, the library board will want to get from the council an amount of how much the council will be willing to spend on doing a library expansion. And then we would have the difference to make up in any kind of fundraising. So Jody is still in the preliminary parts of this, and I have no idea how much she'd be able to raise. I mean, maybe she can raise $15 million, and we'll build two libraries. But maybe she'll say, hey, I can only scare up a half million, and then we're going to go back to figuring out what else we would do. And so we've been keeping, Drake's been able to attend almost all of the library board meetings and see, he's up to date with a lot of this, and he's been giving us feedback about what the council wants and what the city is thinking about as well. And that's what the process is. But just to point out a couple of things about the, the floor plans, I gave a presentation earlier today to Rotary, and one of the things that I was emphasizing is that libraries are always being used, and the use always changes over time. Some of the examples I like to, to give are kind of like in media, where it was said that newspapers were going to go away because everybody was using microfilm. And radio came along, and so nobody will listen to live music, and then nobody's going to listen to the radio because they go to the TV, and then movies were going to go away. You know, and all those things have changed over time, and some of the ways that libraries have changed over time is that literacy and reading is a core part of what we do. But being a community place has been more and more important. So if you look on the floor plans, we have a number of different study spaces in there. If you go to Fort Agathon, which is a fairly newer remodel and expansion, or the big, new, beautiful library in Watertown, there's been more and more spaces just for study and meeting space, anywhere from three to four people to medium-sized, about 10 people, or a larger room like this. And we've incorporated those into the designs here. We've doubled the children's area and taking it out of the basement. I've always used, I've always avoided using the word basement because it sounds so bad. I always say lower level, but it's really a basement. Taking the, everybody up out of there, increasing the meeting space. I had people yesterday, we had a library board meeting in the afternoon, and we had two or three groups of people who needed a place just to sit and talk, and we didn't have a spot for them. We had the study tables back, and those were already taken. And I looked up the stats for how much the meeting room has been used up until, from January 1st to November 15th, and had 323 uses. That's both the public and library events. And we don't keep track, at least I don't keep track, of how many times I have to tell somebody no, the, the room is booked, but there's quite a few there, too. And one other thing, something that concerned me is that we had the, the parking lot improved in the back, which is significant and needed improvement a few years ago. And there had been concern, well, if we do that, how much parking are we going to lose? Is all that new pavement going to be torn up? And some of it will be, but the, the expansion, the pink part there, I had originally expected it, for whatever reason, to be like going all the way halfway down to Oak Street, and that's not the case. It'd be a two-story addition, and then the first floors would be raised up, creating a second floor. But, and on this diagram, it doesn't show it, but we'd be retaining all the parking on that west side, and then the pavement would be extending over to the east, and we'd be adding spaces there and actually gain spaces compared to what we have now. I don't know. Did I miss anything? No? I can keep going. That's what I said at Rotary, too. I can keep going for another hour if you want me to. I assume you don't.
Are there any questions for Gerard? Gerard, one of the documents that we were provided was a pre-referendum timeline. I wonder if you could just touch on that briefly?
Yeah. I had forgotten that. So the timeline was put together by FEH for us, and the plan now, we're still pretty much on schedule. Originally, we'd been talking about having, trying to get on the ballot for an April referendum, which was really tight and ambitious, and we moved that back to August. And so the plan now is that FEH and Jody Sweeney reports will be finalized in January. FEH can do a presentation. We'll have a number from Jody about a reachable fundraising goal, and we could start right away doing a fundraising campaign. The feasibility assessment is like the initial steps of a fundraising campaign anyway, because you're identifying a bunch of possible donors, either individuals or corporations or grants. And then you're also, while you're doing that, you're building a fundraising committee to assist with everything. And so then the fundraising portion would begin in earnest, and we'd have late winter, all through spring into summer to raise money and really inform the public about what the project is. And then it would be June at the very, the last point where the City Council could say, okay, you can, could be on the ballot, would be in June. And so I would hope that we'd have some solid fundraising numbers by that point to convince the council we'd be able to do a fundraising. And then, of course, the referendum vote would be for whatever the council's willing to put forward for tax money for construction.
Thank you, Gerard. I guess I wanted to just clarify something for all of our listeners and the community about the referendum and this, while the library serves a larger area of, I think your memo said 10,000, some individuals, the library is owned by the city. And so any building expansion, those costs would be borne by the city and fundraising that you're working on. And as I understand it, that's the driver for doing a referendum, is the city is making a capital improvement or a municipal building improvement, more than a half a million dollars, then this is an advisory referendum to our taxpayers? Am I explaining that correctly, Drake or Dan?
That's correct. Yep. There's a, there's an ordinance on the books for the city of Lake Mills that any expenditure of taxpayer funds for the construction of a public building over $500,000 is required to go for an advisory referendum to the public.
Okay, thanks. So if your fundraiser finds all the money, then it sounds like we wouldn't necessarily need to do a referendum, but it also, it is an advisory referendum?
Yes.
Okay.
So the public can vote, yeah, we want the library, but then the City Council says, no, not now, or vice versa. City Council could say, yes, we need to do this. And, and to point that out about the service area, I mean, what's the city population, like 6,600 now? And so 40% is outside of the city, and so they don't get to vote on this at all. It always, it's always, from my point of view, it always feels a little weird, like the city's really taking on all this debt. But we do get money from the county, just a reminder of that. This year, we got $114,000 from the county for rural reimbursement. So it's not like those people aren't paying either.
Any other questions for Gerard or comments? Okay, thanks for being here. We'll look forward to your next update.
All right. Thanks. I do want to point out, I always invite my children to join these meetings remotely, hoping that they will answer, ask questions, and they never do.
Be careful what you wish for. Okay. On to agenda item, letter B, which is a discussion and decision on approving the appointment of a successor agent, Satwam Singh, for Handyspot 104 LLC, doing business as BP at 819 North Main Street. So Misty, I see that we have a memo for this. Do you have anything else you want to summarize for us?
No, the memo talks about all, when there's a license for liquor fermented malt beverage, it requires an agent beyond the agents leaving. They've appointed a new agent, they followed everything, and so it would be recommended that it be approved.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the appointment of a successor agent, Satwam Singh, or Handyspot 104 LLC, DVA BP.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Quinell, second by Mr. Waters. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Now, moving on to letter C, this is a discussion, decision item on the Sandy Beach Restaurant Design and Construction Administration request for proposals. So Drake, do we need a motion to enter into discussion, or do you want to just?
I think we can have discussion without a motion right now, if the council's okay with that.
Yes, please.
So this, sorry, thank you. The, so this is, I'll, I'll call it the first draft we have of the RFP coming before you. I, I don't necessarily, you know, expect or think that we need to, to issue it tonight if the council doesn't, doesn't want to. It's a pretty involved RFP. I know you've all only had it for a few days now. You'll see a date there. I made some non-substantive changes to it earlier today, some typographical and errors and holdovers from things that I had meant to, to have removed, but the substance of it has all stayed the same. It's essentially, this would take us through the design of the library, it would take us through the bidding, creating bidable documents and putting it out to bid, and then would also task the architect with the administration of the project for it.
Did you mean Sandy Beach? You said the library. Sorry, Gerard.
I did. Sandy Beach.
I'm sorry.
Sandy Beach, for the, for the restaurant facility. So it is an all-encompassing, full-service RFP for it. I think for a project such as this, it's, we would want a full-time administration of it. It would be a large, a large undertaking for someone in Public Works, for example, to, to try and administer that project and supervise the construction of it. I did have a conversation with the restaurateurs. They indicated that they're not, they're not willing to put any financial contribution towards the architect's services for the restaurant facility. So we're looking at a, the city, this city funding this piece of the project. If there's any questions, it is a rather, there's a lot involved in the RFP. I hope we would get some interest for it. I'm familiar with some architecture firms that I'll, I'll be sure to let them know that we're going out to RFP as well as posting it on, on the league and our other normal postings for it, to try and get as many responses as we can to make sure that we get the service that we're looking for. This would be the next step. I don't anticipate, I guess the reason that I, it's not, we don't have to make a decision imminently, not that we, we don't want to make a decision soon, but it's not, it does not seem to be viable with the schedule to be able to get the, to complete this process of getting an architect on board and getting at least a preliminary design with preliminary cost estimates, to be able to provide the public with the information I think the council would want to for a referendum and get it on an April ballot. We'd have to have referendum language to the county in January. So I think the soonest we could get on a referendum for this would be the August, the August. August ballot. Now, I do think that this type of project could lend itself to fall and winter construction, so it's not necessarily, we still are targeting, if everything continues to go according to plan, a 2025 completion of the facility. But I think targeting the August date for going to the advisory referendum for the building is probably the most realistic time period for us. So, if there's any questions on the RFP, or if there's any things you'd like added or clarified in it that you want to be sure we get out of this, I can take those notes down and bring another draft back to the council at our, at our next meeting.
I have a question. You mentioned a referendum. Was that an advisory referendum or the normal kind?
Advisory.
Advisory, okay.
So, under the ordinance, they're all, they're required, but they're all advisory for a building that exceeds $500,000 in taxpayer funding.
Like what the library was talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Miss Curler.
On the project design site location, it mentions white box.
I can't hear you.
I can't hear either. Okay, Drake, I think you, okay, I'll call this meeting back to order after a brief recess to address the sound system. So, Drake, I think you were answering a question from Mr. Waters.
Sure. So, the question was regarding what a white box is. So, under the proposal from the restaurateur, the city is essentially building the exterior of the, of the building and then basic, the basic interior of it. So, the, the design and finishings of the inside of the building are the responsibility of the tenant, the restaurateur. So, the inside of it will be a white box, a, a, a basic interior that will have to then be designed to fit the, the end user's needs. So, that, under their proposal, they're covering the, those, those costs. They're not part of the, the city project.
Okay. And then, another question I had was, on the first page, it says there will not be a public opening to this proposal. Will this information be public, or only the one we accept? What will be public, I guess?
Yeah, ultimately, all proposals will be, will be public. That's just saying that we won't, we won't, for like, for like a road reconstruction project, we'll bring in any, all the people who submit and open the bids in front of them. We just won't go through that, we won't go through that process. So, we'll open them internally, which is more standard for an RFP, rather than a bid process, a formal bid process. But ultimately, every, every proposal will, will be public and available. So, I would imagine that even if staff brings a recommended, successful proposal, the council and the public will have access to every proposal that we receive.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question or comment? Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, Ms. Curler, thank you. My question pertains to, how much input did Garver have in terms of the details for this RFP that we're looking at today?
I sent them essentially the same one that you're seeing today. They didn't have any further comments on it.
May I ask a follow-up? If, if we didn't have Garver's proposal, and this was just the city moving forward, would the city be inclined to do anything differently or put in different specifications? Because, for instance, we have approximately 4,000 to 4,500 square feet. Would the city do something different if Garver weren't involved?
It's possible. That 4,000 to 4,500 was based off of the proposal that we received. That's the reason that specification is in there. I would, don't know that I could tell you what, how it would differ, largely because I'm not sure, no one on city staff necessarily has the expertise of what a restaurant should look like or needs to be to be successful.
Any other follow-up, Mrs. Bishop?
Not right now, thank you.
I had a couple of questions, or I guess one question and a couple of comments, Drake. On page three, for some of the design criteria in Phase One, there's a bullet point regarding grading and stormwater management. And I'd like to see some reference added to protecting the water quality of Rock Lake. I think that's, you know, given the site and the likely location of the restaurant, that would be paramount in terms of stormwater management and grading to make sure that the lake is protected.
Mm-hmm. I can add that specific requirement.
That would be great. And then, I would also recommend adding a bullet point that the design needs to meet the city's shoreline zoning overlay and, you know, any required structure setbacks or other sorts of requirements. I know I've received comments from, I think the whole council has received comments from constituents that we want to make sure we're meeting our own shoreline zoning requirements.
Okay, yep, we can add that as well.
And then, I guess just a question. I didn't see anything in this specifically related to the parking, which I know, at least based on our work session conversations and our budget conversations, we're anticipating probably that same winter time or early the following spring to be doing the parking lot. So, how do you envision those working together? Would you anticipate this architect, construction manager overseeing or designing some of the parking, or would that be done separately?
I kind of envisioned it being rolled into the, the overall site assessment. So, you know, after we pick, after we pick an architect, I still think there's some leeway to flesh out exactly what, you know, everything is going to look like and what we're hoping to see out of the project, but I would envision that it would, that would bear itself out during the process of working with the successful applicant on, on what exactly we're hoping to achieve, and roll that into the site assessment and design, for at least that first part of the, of the parking lot. We can add, we can add it specifically about the surrounding parking lot. I was also going to make, as an addendum to it, make available, you know, past materials that the council has reviewed for Sandy Beach, just as a reference, not as a requirement to follow it, but just as a general idea of things that have been considered, so they kind of know some of the history of this project.
Okay, that sounds good. Are there any other comments or questions on the draft RFP? Hey, Drake, it sounds like you're recommending, you're recommending that we move this over to the next meeting to allow some time for editing, allow the council a little more time to review this. Is that, is that right?
I'm comfortable with that.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I would motion to approve and move forward with the request for proposal for Administrative Services and Construction Administration Services as outlined for Sandy Beach Restaurant. Oh, second?
We have a motion by Mr. Waters and a second by Mr. Fields. Mr. Waters, would that, a question, so we're in discussion now on your proposal. Would that allow for some of the edits that we've discussed this evening to occur?
Yes, the motion would include the edits.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the proposed approval of the RFP?
Ms. Curler, I have a, a comment, if I may?
Yes, please.
I hate to admit that I'm already having a problem here. At the last meeting, although I wasn't here in person, what I thought I saw and heard from the people representing Garver was that they understood, at some point, they were going to have to start putting up some money to assist the city in this endeavor. And now, we come to the RFP process for an architect, the first step the city is undertaking, and we're being told they're absolutely not contributing to this portion of their project. So, I have a little bit of an issue with that. I think it's unfortunate that they're not here tonight as well, when this is, again, their project. So, we haven't, going out for RFP, I know doesn't expend any city funds at this point, but it does bring people in and waste time if we don't know that we're going to fund this thing or have any further financial input from the entrepreneurs. So, that's where I'm sitting right now. I don't want to totally say no, because we are still in an exploratory phase, but that's how I feel about this at this point on this vote.
I have a follow-up and a question. Mr. Daley, would the, the concerns that Ms., Ms. Bishop brought up, would those be things that the, the business owner is expecting to take care of the inside of the white box? And that would be their expenditure? Is that where their mindset is, or is there more to it than that?
I don't know that I can speak to their state of, their state of mind or their, their reasoning. In the, in the correspondence I had with them, the, the conversation was largely that the city would be building this asset and owning this asset, and so that it would be that the city would pay for this, because they're paying to design and construct an asset that we'll continue to own into the future. Any, any maintenance of this facility on an ongoing basis, I think will be addressed in a future lease agreement. Any type of financial contribution through that lease or through a revenue share would be addressed through the, the lease arrangement. So, we still have to, we still have to come to terms on, on something like that with them as well. It's a, it's a, it's a complicated process that we're going through, because there's different parallel paths on this, in that we have to, if we want to hit our, hit certain time metrics, we have to continue down the public processes that we have to go through, while also continuing conversations with the restaurateur to ensure we know what the full financial picture for the city is going to look like prior to...
Breaking ground?
Going, yeah, going forward with the project. So, there's more conversations to be had yet across all, many different aspects of this process that we're undertaking.
Ms. Curler, I had a response to that.
And, Mrs. Bishop?
The city has always been able to go out and build a white box at this location. If that's what we were going to do, we could have done it two years ago. We don't need to be married to Garver to do that. And so, maybe it's a chicken and egg problem, but now it seems like we're almost back to the start. We had an RFP, we had a proposal, we accepted. We thought we were going to this with a business partner to do the business side, to help contribute financially for their business endeavor, and now we don't have them already at such an early stage. So, you know, as sworn as I am and with those comments notwithstanding, I will probably vote yes on this, just to move it forward, just to see what costs could be for the city to build that white box. But I'd have to see a lot more from our partners to move forward after that point, to be convinced.
Thank you, Mrs. Bishop. And I'd like to make some comments as well. I really appreciate you bringing up this, this, you know, sort of bigger question and helping us think about the consequences of each decision that we make along the path of trying to meet our public's desire for a new restaurant at Sandy Beach Park. I agree with you that it's disappointing, that we're not seeing maybe more engagement from the restaurateur at this point. I also can kind of see their perspective that, well, this is the city's, it's going to be the city's building, so, you know, why would they need to pitch in at this? I really anticipated that we would see any restaurateur being involved in, financially, in paying for a lease and maybe some cost sharing. I, I never expected that they would help to fund or finance, a restaurateur would help to fund or finance a city-owned building. So, I guess I didn't have that expectation, but I think you're raising a really good, larger point, and this is very timely on the heels of hearing a presentation about the library. We're going to hit a point in this process where we're going to really be having to grapple with what, what do we want to spend taxpayer dollars on or in taxpayer debt? And we're not going to be able to do all the things that our, different members of our community and different groups are asking for. So, I don't think we're quite at that point if we would approve this RFP tonight, this draft RFP tonight. But we're going to have to have those tough conversations soon about, you know, what are we going to spend money on, and what are we not going to be able to? So, having said all that, again, I really appreciate you bringing up this issue, and I think we're going to have to continue to have some of these hard conversations moving forward. And I'm in support of moving ahead on this RFP tonight.
Ms. Curler?
Mr. Fields?
Just to kind of follow up on the comments here. If you look at it from the restaurateur's perspective, we did make it very clear through the whole process at our last meeting that it, we are going to be in full control of this and could have put a stop to it at any time also. So, from their perspective, until it's actually moving forward or they have some guarantees, it's going to be hard for them to justify, all their money's at risk if they do anything on this very front end, until we make a commitment to move forward. I believe, looking at it from their perspective, that they'll definitely be involved in this, but I think they're going to have, we're going to have to get it to a point where it's, they've pretty much got a guarantee it's going to move forward. Otherwise, for them, it's kind of a little lottery ticket. If there's, we said at our last meeting, we want the option to pull the plug or put a stop to this at any point during this process. I think we made that clear last time. There's going to be several steps here. So, having them not sit in here to okay the RFP doesn't bother me, in that I think their involvement's going to become, once we get the RFP, get a selection, start moving forward, they're going to start getting involved in the input of it. That's where we'll have an opportunity to, to start talking about the finances more. I think we're a little bit too early to pull them into it. That's my feelings.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Any other comments on this draft RFP? Okay, seeing none, let's move ahead with a roll call vote to approve the Sandy Beach Restaurant Design and Construction Administration Request for Proposal with edits that were discussed during the council meeting this evening.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is Letter D, Resolution 23-74, which is the Jefferson County Humane Society contract. Misty, can you read that title for us?
Resolution 23-74, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Humane Society of Jefferson County.
But this item is currently tabled. Is there a motion to remove from the table?
Sure, so we can discuss, I'll remove this from table. Remove from table Resolution 23-74, 2024 Jefferson County Humane Society Contract.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Waters, second by Ms. Quednow, to remove from the table. Can we have a show of hands? All in favor? I see five hands, so that's a 5-0 to remove from the table. Now, we can proceed with discussion, is that correct?
So, I asked Chief Schroeder to explore some other options for our animal control services that were required to have by statute. He did reach out to Watertown, so City of Watertown Humane Society and then Jefferson County Humane Society are the two options that would be available to us. Watertown Humane Society is currently undergoing a renovation of their facility and indicated that they did not believe that they would be in a position to add on new clients at this time, but I do think they will be something we should seriously consider in the future. We did talk with Jefferson County Humane Society about the council's concerns over the cost and the amount of interactions that we're having, animal interactions that we're actually having. You received the email from the Director of the Humane
You received the email from the director of the Humane Society and they weren't willing to reduce the cost of the contract as it was currently written, but offered to reduce the services of the contract, which would result in a decrease in, in the contract price. Specifically, they offered to do, to only do police drop offs, which would be a reduction in the service that we're, that we currently and our residents currently enjoy. So those are the details that we have since the last meeting.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Waters?
Yeah, I did receive the email from the director of the Humane Society of Jefferson County. It, it didn't really clarify all the, all the questions I had as far as the number of, the number of animals. He did state that there was 150 animals at any given time within the facility. I'm not sure how many that might be annually. If, I guess if they have a four week turnover, they're looking at 1,800 animals in the facility annually. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what that number might be and what Lake Mills' contribution might be to that, that number as well. He did outline a lot of charity work that's done within, within our city. But when you look at the, the number, I'm not sure if we're looking at 26 animals from Lake Mills or if we're looking at 50 animals from Lake Mills. It's, it's confusing, confusing how those numbers are outlined. And how many, how many of those animals are there running at large? Do we have an answer to any of those questions?
Yeah, my, my understanding is that it is the 50, the 50 animals, 50 interactions with separate animals. So the police, the police drop offs, the nine are going to be at large animals that the police department have, have picked up. That was nine. The public drop off is the 14. Now that could be, that, I believe that's animals that the public picked up in our community and brought to them. They're not owner surrenders because they, there's 20 owner surrenders that the owners themselves turned over the animal to the Humane Society. And then the shelter had three stray pickups themselves. I would, I, they're not, so they don't come to Lake Mills after hours or anything like that. The police department does any, any pickups like that. So there, that's probably why that number is lower. And then, then you have the owner requested euthanasia, which I believe is counted separately from owner surrenders. So I do believe that it is a, that there have been 50 interactions between the Jefferson County Humane Society and an animal that originated from the City of Lake Mills.
Okay, thank you. He did outline also something about municipal billings and how that might have an impact on the number of animals that have been surrendered, that being 20, I believe for owner surrender, 20. Can we get an outline on what that municipal billing is that he's referring to?
Which paragraph was that in?
That's on page, the second page of my printout. It's under municipal billings.
In his email.
Between community cats and community services.
RLA license and late fees. Okay. I believe what this is referring to is that if they pick up an unlicensed animal and there is a, the city's dog license or late fee or fee for having an unlicensed animal, that the Humane Society requires the owner to basically come current on those. And so that those are municipally set costs that are then passed on, if I'm, if I'm understanding that paragraph correctly. I will note that I'll make, I'll make a point of reaching out to the Humane Society if we do renew this contract for the annual or the monthly report that he indicates. I myself have not seen such a report and I'm not aware that a member of my staff has. So it's, it's something that they state is sent. I don't currently know where that is being sent to.
That was my next question, thank you. All right. So 50 animals at 18,000, I guess we're looking at about $360 an animal. But yet he does outline many other services that's, that's offered. I guess I'm just having trouble understanding where this 18,000 is going and would like a better outline. I'm not sure if we're going to get that, but I'd be, as an individual, as a single representative, I would be more than happy to reach out to get my answers. But I, I don't know how that would impact everybody else.
If there's more specific, if there, if you'd like me to take down a list of questions and we bring it back again, I will certainly ask the specific questions if the council would like to and bring it back. We just have, we just have to have the service in place for January. So we still have a couple of meetings in December to approve it, but I'm happy to do that.
Mr. Waters, you want to maybe clarify what some of your questions are? And I, I have one as well, so.
I'd like to look at the financials.
So like a breakdown of what the city's financial contribution is going to in their operations, essentially?
Sure, yeah.
That's, that would be similar to my question. I was thinking of it in a different way, but as I think a couple of people have pointed out, the email from the director identifies a significant number of services that Jefferson County Humane Society provides. But it's not clear to me which one of those are provided under this contract or which are other services that the Humane Society provides to the county, you know, county residents more generally outside of this contract.
Ms. Curler?
Go ahead, Ms. Quinnow.
Is the fact that Jefferson County Humane Society is a nonprofit have any bearing on the fact that while this might be contractual language to discuss how each resident of Lake Mills pays $2.69? Is this per year?
Yes.
Per year? I, I have no problem paying the $2.69 as a resident of Lake Mills as well as knowing that, that money goes towards services that other communities also pay a certain amount for that benefits the entire county. So while I understand the need for the, the financials and looking at all of those things, I also understand that this nonprofit organization is, is doing everything they can to make sure that we don't have a bunch of animals running around, cats and whatever, because they, they replicate very quickly. Doing what they can to also provide information and services as well as opportunities for educational opportunities. Like they, I saw there were several camps that were mentioned. So in my opinion, I feel like, yeah, $1,800 seems like a lot. But when put together with other communities and whatever they're being billed, and then they're being able to say, hey, we supply this service, whether or not it's your community or if it's another community or if it's the whole county. I think it's something that, I think the whole county should just pay. Because $2.69 per year is pretty nominal, in my opinion.
You're saying that as a representative of Lake Mills?
No, well, for me, as a, as a, as a individual, I feel like $2.69 per year is, it's less than a Starbucks drink. So in my opinion, I feel like that is something that every, as a, as a community member who pays taxes as well as everyone else, I feel like it's just part of our responsibility to protect our community. And protecting our community from animals that could cause harm to others is part of that.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions that council members would like Mr. Daly to follow up on?
Ms. Curler, I had a couple of comments.
Yeah, Mrs. Bishop, please.
This is a really interesting conversation to me because as Ms. Quinnow points out, for $2 and some odd cents for the community, we're talking about what are we supposed to be doing statutorily? And I'm sitting here trying to find the Wisconsin requirements for this for municipality to provide these types of services. I couldn't find it that quickly, so I'm not that good. Okay, keyword, ooh, may, that's a good word, I like that. So for about $18,000, we may provide some subset of these services. I think the main concern is animals at large, citizens surrender, that type of thing, although I did not find that specific language because I did not look at the statute yet. So it seems like for the things that we may have to require, we are also paying for a lot of other things that I don't feel like our citizens should be subsidizing. Now, the rub is the citizens don't get their $2 and some odd cents back. It goes back to the general fund, but we could also just reallocate that to better uses. The other part that I find interesting is, Mr. Waters, I think it was your question at the last meeting or a statement that you made that people who go to get their animals back have to apparently pay a specific or a significant fee to the Humane Society. And we've not yet heard what that number is.
That's the municipal charges, that's the follow up to that.
Well, what I thought was interesting was in the Humane Society Director's email, he references municipal, municipal billings, which Mr. Daly is clarifying, he thinks that refers to our licensing fees. I don't know if that's the case. I'd like to get more clarification on that, which it sounds like we will. But I also saw in the email that he references basically a pass through back to the city of any fees assessed. And that's the first time I've ever heard that. Is there an actual pass through from the Humane Society of the fees they charge for pickups or anything else back to the city? Because I'd like to know that number too.
Sam, are you aware of us receiving revenue from the Humane Society for fees they've collected on our behalf, like a running at large?
We should be getting checks, yes. In my previous municipalities, we would get a monthly statement and any running at large fees, we would, would get returned to us. The charge was $25, so if your dog was caught, we would get that check back from the Humane Society. And if they weren't registered, they had to pay the registration. If it was late, they also had to pay the late fee. So we should be getting reports back from the Humane Society.
I'll run a report. We'll run a report before the next meeting on the amounts that we're receiving back. But this is the first, this, the email I saw yesterday was the first I had heard of a monthly report coming to the city. I'm, I'm not aware of one. And if someone else is receiving it, I, I don't know who it may be.
I was just going to say that I do not receive it and I, I haven't seen it in a long time because I don't, I don't do that anymore. But I know that we used to get a monthly report and I believe that it would go right to the general bookkeeper, I believe, after going through the front office to put in for the license if they need to be licensed. But again, it's been a long time, so I can't say more than that. But I do recall that from years ago.
And just a comment on that point, if we decide to move forward with renewing this contract at some point, maybe we want to clarify in the language who we want that to be submitted to and make sure that we are receiving it every month.
So, Ms. Curler, may I say a couple of other things? I'd like to know if the $25 pass through is the full amount the Humane Society bills or a portion? And then what their full amount is that they get if we only get a portion? And then just by way of reference, one of the other services the Humane Society is providing is a camp for children. I'm not saying I don't like camps for children. Please, somebody don't misconstrue that. That's going to be the headline tomorrow. That is wrong. By way of example, you know, parents pay for camps for their kids. I don't know why the city has to subsidize something like that as well as the other examples that the director gave. So from that perspective, I would tend to, if we relook the contract, cut out some of those additional services that are in addition to what the city may provide under Wisconsin statutes.
Along those same lines, I guess I would be interested in data on the Safe Keeps. That's a program that they describe where someone who is in a life critical medical situation or something like that, where they can't care for their pet, that the Humane Society would offer that. And I'm, I'm not clear whether that's a service that's provided under our contract or that just is also something that the Humane Society makes available to the community at large. So it would be helpful to understand that and also know if any residents of the City of Lake Mills have made use of that.
The report did outline one safe keep for this past year.
Oh, I missed that, thank you. Was that in their numbers at the end?
Yes.
Yes, it was, right before the conclusion. If there's no other comments, I would move to table this to the next meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mrs. Bishop to table this item again till the next meeting. Is there any discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call on the motion to table, please?
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And Sylvan Drake will look for any additional information you can provide to us at the next meeting. Okay, next agenda item, letter E is Resolution 23-76, which is next year's John's disposal contract amendment. Ms. D, would you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-76, establishing garbage refuse and recyclable pickup and disposal fees pursuant to section 556-20 of the City of Lake Mills Municipal Code.
Your motion.
I move to approve Resolution 23-76, establishing garbage refuse and recyclable pickup and disposal fees pursuant to section 556-20 of the City of Lake Mills Municipal Code.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quinnow, seconded by Mr. Fields. Any discussion?
Should we have a staff discussion?
Oh, yes, staff. Thank you.
There's a memo included in your packet from Sam regarding the, the increase from Johns. It is within the contractually allowable amount. It's an increase of 62 cents. This is a pass through fee, so it is passed on to the user, to the resident for 2024. We're anticipating our recycling grant to remain the same. So we will, there is a, it comes out to a 3.6% increase in the rate. This was reviewed by the Public Works Board and they recommended approval.
Thank you, Drake. Now, is there any discussion or question? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So can we have a roll call vote on Resolution 23-76, which is the 2024 John's Disposal Contract Amendment?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next is agenda item, letter F, Resolution 23-77, disallowing a claim against the city. Ms. D, would you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-77, action on notice of claim and claim for damages brought by Sandra Rudy. Vehicle damage alleged to have occurred near the intersection of Tyranina Park Road and Cherokee Path in Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve Resolution 23-77, action on notice of claim and claim for damage brought by, that's not the way I want to do it, start over. I'll move to approve Resolution 23-77, disallowance of claim. I'll move to approve Resolution 23-77, disallowance of claim for Rudy.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, I heard, seconded by Ms. Quinnow. Is there a staff comment?
Hi. You were presented with this claim and discussed in closed session. The crux of it is vehicle damage that is alleged to have occurred driving over a recently reconstructed roadway as a result of a water main break on Tyranina Park Road. The claim was submitted to your insurer. Your insurer has recommended disallowance of the claim that has been sent to the, the claimant by letter. I believe a, a copy of the letter has been presented to you as well. If there are any questions about the claim, I'm, I'm happy to discuss with you. I would advise, if there are no questions with regard to the claim, that you just move forward to a formal vote, disallowing the claim in accordance with the recommendation of both staff and the insurer.
Are there any questions for Attorney Drescher? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward with a roll call vote on Resolution 23-77, which is disallowance of a claim against the city from Sandra Rudy. So a vote in favor of the resolution would be a vote in favor of disallowance.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 23-78, a reduction of the financial guarantee for North Oak Town Homes. Misty, would you read that title, please?
City of Lake Mills, Resolution 23-78, second reduction of financial guarantee, North Oak Town Homes.
Your motion, please.
I move to approve Resolution 23-78, the second reduction of financial guarantee to North Oak Town Homes. Second.
Motion by Ms. Quinnow, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. Staff comment?
Now, the developer has completed their obligations to allow for a reduction in their letter of credit per the development agreement. So this is the formal action in order to do so. So the, the engineer on the project has claimed that they are, they are at substantial completion, and that is what precipitates the reduction in the letter of credit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
How much would remain in the, as being held back after this, after this allowance?
Approximately $100,000.
Any other questions or comments? I had just one question, just to be clear. We have this item, and then the next item is also a reduction of financial guarantee and an acceptance of public infrastructure. So for North Oak Town Homes, we do not have an acceptance of public infrastructure at this time. Is that right?
That's correct. In this instance, there are still some landscaping requirements that need to be completed and some other public infrastructure work that still needs to be done. We don't accept the public infrastructure until there, we're, we're confident that no damage will occur to that public infrastructure before we take ownership of it. So with the additional work, some of the additional work that they'll be doing just to complete up the landscaping specifically, we'll wait until that, we're satisfied that that is complete before accepting that public infrastructure.
And before there's a vote on this specific item, there are a couple of errors in the resolution. It looks like an older draft was actually attached to the agenda that did contemplate acceptance of public infrastructure. That is found in the second-to-last paragraph, or the last paragraph before the second, be it further resolved.
I'm sorry, Dan, can you restate that one more time?
Yeah, this, the, the attached resolution was amended in response to a consulting's engineers' letter on Friday afternoon. And I think an older version, or some remnant of an older version of the document, was put forward. There's numbering errors with regard to the, the resolution number, as well as a contemplation of acceptance of public infrastructure in the resolution as it's currently written. And I wouldn't advise to adopt that. The paragraph before the second resolution, be it further resolved, states, "The City Council hereby authorizes the Council President to sign resolution," and then it's misnumbered, 2379, "Acceptance of Public Improvements and Infrastructure." That was the title of the document prior to the changes. And I think that, at the very least, that statement should be removed because acceptance is not contemplated at this time.
Because we're not accepting the public improvements at this time.
At this point. And the reason that acceptance is not occurring on this, or that we, it's been not recommended to accept at this point is because there's site work that needs to be completed, and a, there's, there's risk with that, specifically with regard to curb boxes and, yeah, landscaping obligations. I think general concerns would be that damage to curb boxes and such should be avoided, and landscaping should be complete prior to acceptance so that we avoid any, any damage to those, those implements prior to acceptance, so that we know when we accept that they are in, in good working order and that everything has been built in, in accordance with the, the specs and the, the development plan for the site. So originally, it was anticipated that this would include an acceptance, and I believe that remnant was just included in error.
Attorney Drescher, are we under obligation to reduce the letter of credit due to their eligibility by a certain timeframe? Or can we have this resolution corrected and vote on it at our next meeting?
I'm aware of what corrections need to be made, so we can, we can correct those via amendment right now if that's desired. Otherwise, we, we do have to address this issue. I believe that we do have time to kick this to the next meeting if that is preferred.
And as I understand your explanation, they are two separate actions by the council to reduce the financial guarantee and to accept the public interest, infrastructure, so each one is not dependent on the other.
Correct. And actually, if we move it to the next meeting, that may give us an opportunity to work with the, the developer to ensure that the, the final aspects that need to be completed are completed. And perhaps we can come forward with the, the acceptance at the same time as the second reduction. So, but yes, you are correct in your first statement. Acceptance of dedication is completely secondary or, or separate from the reduction in the letter of credit. We have determined that the installation of the public facilities, the public infrastructure that's necessary to serve the development have been completed. Those, the installation of the public improvements and infrastructure have been completed in accordance with the plans and are satisfactory. We have identified that substantial completion of, of that aspect was accomplished on or about October 1st. And my understanding is that the request came in just shortly after that for the reduction.
Well, unless council member feels strongly about tabling this till next time, if Attorney Drescher, if you can identify the changes and we can resolve those by amendment tonight.
Yes, throughout the document, it should be referred to as Resolution 23-78. And then in the second paragraph of the first resolution, be it therefore resolved, the second paragraph currently states, "The City Council hereby authorizes the Council President to sign resolution," should be renumbered to 2378. Acceptance of public improvements should be removed to just state a second reduction of financial guarantee for North Oak Town Homes. In my review right now, I believe that's the only necessary change to accomplish the anticipated task.
Mr. Drescher?
Yes, sir.
Should that be Resolution 23-78 or 2379?
It's 2378 throughout.
Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion to amend Resolution 23-78?
I move to table Resolution 23-79.
Second.
Rather, 2378.
2378, thank you. I move to table Resolution 23-78.
Mr. Fields, are you still second?
Correct.
The motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Field, to table Resolution 23-78. Would that be to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? I'm not seeing any. Let's have a roll call vote on the motion to table Resolution 23-78.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is Resolution 23-79, Acceptance of Public Infrastructure and Reduction of Financial Guarantee for Summer Ridge. Misty, would you read that title for us, please?
City of Lake Mills, Resolution 23-79, Acceptance of Public Improvements and Infrastructure and Second Reduction of Financial Guarantee, Summer Ridge Stacked Flats.
So I realize that I had Resolution 23-79 pulled up the whole time on our last discussion, so I apologize for my redundancy there. But I'll move to approve Resolution 23-79, Acceptance of Public Improvements and Infrastructure and Second Reduction of Financial Guarantee for Summer Ridge Stacked Flats.
Second.
Yeah, nothing else.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Quinnow? Yeah?
Yes.
Any staff discussion on Resolution 23-79?
Is there a staff comment?
Yeah, this is Riverwood Holdings Development, Summer Ridge, Out at Brookstone. It is substantially complete. This document calls for both acceptance and a subsequent reduction of the financial guarantee. $99,000 is to be maintained moving forward for the one-year period, one-year warranty period. Dedication of the, acceptance of dedication of the public infrastructure will start the one-year warranty period tolling. There is a similar error in this, in the numbering. What happened is there was a removal of a, of a previously proposed resolution at the last second. So at one point in this document, it does reference Resolution 2380. I would consider that a Scrivener's error at this point. This document is 2379, and, and I believe everything else in it is accurate.
Oh, Ms. Curler, I think you got me.
Thank you. You're advising that we can make that correction to the resolution number and then move forward?
Yes, and I don't think, yes, and I don't think a, a motion to amend is necessary merely a Scrivener's error. Nothing substantive there.
Are any questions or discussion on 2379? Mrs. Bishop?
Ms. Curler, Mr. Drescher, just the next sentence, be it further resolved, should also say 23-80.
Oh, yes, that, and that was a remnant of a, a previous reduction. You are correct. That should state 2379 as well. So both of those references should be to 2379. You are correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Okay, seeing none, let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 23-79, which is the acceptance of public infrastructure and reduction of financial guarantee for Summer Ridge.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is Resolution 23-80, which is the 2024 City Manager Compensation. Misty, would you read that title?
Resolution 23-80, City Manager Compensation.
Make a motion, please.
Move to approve Resolution 23-80, City Manager Compensation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Field, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. Well, this is our annual establishing of the City Manager's Compensation. So this sets the, sets your salary for the 2024 year rate. I would like to personally thank you for your service to the city during your first year with us. We appreciate all the accomplishments that you've completed. I think you've made a great start getting to know our community members and our culture since last September. You've helped to move this city forward on several high-priority items, and you met or exceeded the city's expectations for all the elements of your annual performance review. Would any other council members like to make a comment before we vote on this resolution?
I think you summed it up pretty well, Lisa.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 23-80, the 2024 City Manager Compensation.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is Resolution 23-81, the 2024 Utilities Budget Approval. Misty, would you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-81, Resolution Declaring Official 2024 Utilities Budget.
They would like to make a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution 23-81, Resolution Declaring Official 2024 Utilities Budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fields, was that Ms. Quinnow for a second? Thank you. Staff?
All of, on this one, I'd like to, I'd just like to commend our Finance Director, Sam Bell, for the immense amount of work her and Public Works Director, Randy Myram, and Dwayne Van der Maas put into the, the utility budget. It is, it's a much improved document with, with a much greater transparency and much more usable document. So I'd just like to thank them, and then note that the Public Works Board did review the utilities budget and recommended approval.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on the proposed utility budget? I would also like to add my thanks to Sam and Dwayne and Randy for your work on this, and also for the entire Finance Department, because you did this on the heels of transitioning to a completely new accounting slot to wear, so I know that was a, a big lift for you in this last calendar year. So thank you for completing this effort and, and improving the usability and transparency of this budget. Any other questions or comments? Okay, now let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 23-81, which is the 2024 Utilities Budget Approval.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, our next item, Letter I, is a public hearing for the 2024 General Fund Budget. And I note that we have as an attachment, a public notice... And I note that we have as an attachment, the public notice, which was duly published in the Lake Mills Leader. So I will open this public hearing now for any comments from the community. Any member of the public, please just come to the podium and provide your comments.
Ms. Curler, there's nobody in the audience tonight.
Thank you. That's kind of what I can see from my view, on the TV view, but thank you for confirming that. Okay, it doesn't appear that there's anyone online. So I have a close-up public hearing on the 2024 General Fund Budget, and we'll move on to Ordinance 1259, which is the 2024 General Fund Budget. This is our third reading tonight, so Misty, would you please read that title for us?
Ordinance 1259, 2024 General Government Budget and Tax Levy Ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Ordinance 1259, 2024 General Government Budget and Tax Levy Ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quinell, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. Drake, would you like to make any comments?
I would just like to thank all staff for their work on the 2024 budget, and then also thank the City Council. This budget represents a significant investment in both public safety as well as city employee compensation, two priorities that we set out to accomplish in this budget, and an excellent progress on both fronts. And so just a thank you to the City Council for your support of this budget, and I look forward to seeing the things that the staff can accomplish under the proposed budget, as well as all the progress we make together in 2024.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council members? Okay, seeing none, let's move to a roll call vote on Ordinance 1259, which is the 2024 General Fund Budget.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next agenda item, Letter N, is a public hearing on the 2024 Capital Budget, which was duly published in the Lake Mills Leader. I will now open this public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to comment to the council, you can come to the podium and share your comments at this time.
No one has shown up.
No one has arrived since the last public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So seeing no members of the public wishing to comment, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to Agenda Letter O, which is Ordinance 1260, the 2024 Capital Budget. This is our third reading tonight, so Misty, would you please read that title for us?
Ordinance 1260, 2024 Capital Budget.
Thank you. Drake, would you like to make any comments on the capital budget?
Just continuing my thanks to the staff and to the City Council for their work on this document.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from council members? I just would like to make one comment, other than thank you to the staff for putting this together. People may note that this is $1.3 million lower than in 2023, and that is primarily because we are not doing a street reconstruction project in 2024. So if people are noticing that difference, that's the reason. I would anticipate we'll probably get back into street reconstruction in future years. Okay, any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll move ahead with a roll call vote on Ordinance 1260, which is the 2024.
I think we still need a motion on this one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, can we have a motion on Ordinance 1260?
I'll move to approve Ordinance 1260, 2024 Capital Budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Field, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. Thank you for calling that to my attention. And now, is there any further question or discussion on Ordinance 1260? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote on Ordinance 1260, the 2024 Capital Budget?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. So we're on to Item 10, Recommendation for Future Agendas. We had a couple of items this evening that we've tabled. Drake, anything else that you're anticipating for us?
Nothing to mention at this time.
Okay, I have a couple of notes. Think we can expect a progress report from the Parks Board regarding the mill pond at one of our December meetings. I think there was also a request for staff recommendations on using the remaining ARPA funds. Anything else from other council members?
The two tabled items, one was the Humane Society, and the other one was the North Oak Townhomes.
North Oak, right. Okay. All right, if there is nothing further, then we'll adjourn this meeting, and I wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.